For the past more than forty-five years, the League of Women Voters of Wilmatt has worked with eighth-grade students throughout Wilmatt to provide the opportunity to learn about the workings of local government. In the past, students have worked closely with representatives from the boards of the village, the library, the park district, and our two K through eight school boards, District Thirty-seven and District Thirty-nine, and they learned firsthand how these boards function. Today, students from District Thirty-nine will conduct a mock meeting of the District Thirty-nine Board of Education. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Wilmatt, I would like to thank all of the District Thirty-nine administrators and staff, especially Eric Rieses and Erin Schwartz, as well as all the members of the District Thirty-nine School Board and Superintendent Lechner for making the League's Student and Government Leaders Program possible. And now we'll turn it over to the students.
Good evening. I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for the Wilmatt Public School District Thirty-nine from Monday, March fifth, two thousand eighteen. Will the Secretary please take the roll call?
Present.
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 Now we will conduct the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have received the minutes from the February meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye. Are there any that are against it? Seeing none, the minutes have been approved. Would anyone from the audience like to address the board? Seeing none, we will hear from the staff members about the options for renovation of Highcrest Middle School. We will hear from the superintendent first. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. So due to an influx of students at Highcrest Middle School, fifth and sixth grade, the district has motioned for plans to renovate the building. So there are two options, option A and option B, two at considerably similar price points. Both plans involve a relocation of the LMC or Learning Commons and possible extension or buildup of certain classrooms. I'll now hand it over to the other students for presentations.
We will first hear from the project architect. Please come to the podium and deliver your report to the board. It seems like the project architect is not in the building, so we will move on to the Director of Business Services. Please come to the podium and deliver your report to the board.
Hi, I'm Adam Panzika. I'm the Director of Business Services.
I'm Melissa Kirby, and I am the Director of Operations and Maintenance.
If you'll direct your attention towards the board. This is our opinion on the Highcrest renovation proposal.
We prefer option B, which is because option B requires less shuffling of classes. Only the Spanish classes will require moving compared to option A's changing of many classes. With the more classes that need moving, more teachers will temporarily have no home base. And after the renovation is finished, the Spanish classes will actually be bigger than they were before.
Additionally, option B is also more budget-friendly. Well, option A costs about three point five seven million. Option B costs about three point three nine million. Even if this difference in money may seem like a little, it's really not. We should be taking all measures possible to make sure that the residents of Wilmatt do not have to pay any more taxes than necessary.
Lastly, option B allows students going to the LC access to the wide curved hallways, which makes it easier to find as well as to enter and exit. It also involves less manual labor since not as many classes are relocating. All in all, option B is better because it requires less shuffling, costs less money, and results in more open space.
Thank you. Any questions?
Does any board member have a question?
Where will the teachers go if they're relocated?
For the Spanish teachers, they'd go to where the current LMC is. For the, I'm not absolutely sure where the, like, special ed teachers and the...
For option B, the special ed, drama, and art classes, they won't have to move at all, which just is a lot easier for everyone.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I don't necessarily have a question. I'd just like to offer my approval. I remember back when I was in fifth grade, I was, my homeroom was in the long curved, the long new hallway that was added to Highcrest not too long ago. And I always thought it was very annoying trying to get through these, those curved hallways. It was always really packed. Also, I took Spanish at Highcrest, and it was a lot, it was kind of difficult to fit everyone in run room because the Spanish classroom was pretty cramped, so I feel like option B would definitely be better. Thank you.
So you said that the, a bunch of classrooms in option A would have to be, just not have a home base? How long exactly would they not have a home base?
Well, the renovations start, I believe, in June, and they will go through the summer for part one of the renovations. But the teachers who don't have a home base, they may be out of a room for maybe like an entire year.
Are there any more questions? Seeing none, thank you. Now, will the Wilmatt Junior High School and Highcrest Middle School principals please come up to the podium and address the board?
Hi, I'm Griffin, and I am the principal.
Hi, I'm Jack, and I'm the grade-level administrator.
So this is option A.
It has the pros such as the LC is seven thousand square feet. The LC is actually over a thousand square feet larger than the LC that would have been in option B. And it takes away one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet less of courtyard than option B. And Spanish does not have to be moved with this option. Also, art and drama will get more space as a result.
Yet, one hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars more is put into this option. We will have to relocate the special ed rooms. We will have to relocate the art room, which means that we have to move the kiln. We will have to relocate the drama room. We will have a loss of two thousand square feet in the garden and a loss of the conference room, which is not helpful for teachers.
Okay, this is option B. So some of the pros for this plan is it costs a substantial amount less at one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars less. And then, in the LC, there are flex rooms, which will help for teachers who do not have rooms currently. Also, for the construction process, it will be much simpler to do the LC because cement will not have to be moved as far and it'll cost less to do that. It is also helpful for the staff rooms because fewer teachers will be forced to work on carts and have to move all day. Students will also have easy access to the bathrooms from the Learning Commons, which will be helpful because they will not be out of class for as long.
And yet, the LC will be smaller by one thousand two hundred and sixty square feet. The LC is right next to the gym, so there could be a noise problem. The LC takes three thousand three hundred and fifty square feet from the garden. The relocation of Spanish rooms will not be great for teachers or students.
But we do have an opinion, and we believe while both options have good pros and cons, option B holds more promise for the well-being of our students and staff. This is because of the major financial differential, the easier relocation of classes, and the extra flex classrooms. So why option B will help our school for our reasons as principal, I'm glad. So this past year at Highcrest, we have six teachers working off carts. And with the flex classrooms, these teachers will not be forced to move every time they need to go to a new class. Also, the new LC is in a better space because it is in a more centralized location in the school. With the LC being closer to the gym, there will be less noise around the fifth-grade classrooms. This will concentrate the noise to a certain part of the building.
Drama and art classes have a lot of supplies and would be more of a challenge to relocate them than to just relocate the Spanish classes, which don't have as many materials to move. With option B, special ed classrooms have four thousand square feet instead of options A's small two thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. Finally, we will have more money to keep for later because Plan B costs almost two hundred thousand dollars less. This money can be used to get improved electronics, air conditioning for other parts of the school, or more student programs to help students succeed.
Thank you. Does any board member have a question? Mr. Harris?
How would option B affect the students?
Option B would affect the students because with the LC being clo, being in more the middle part of the school, it will be much easier to, like, it will be much more accessible to the students and to the staff who are going down to the LC to teach. Also, the students will have, the students will have the gym and the LC in a similar location, which will not have to move the special ed classrooms. And with the special ed classrooms, they'll have more space than before, which will be helpful for development.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. DiCamillo?
In option A, you said that they had to move the kiln. How far would they have to move that?
I will have to check with my resources.
They would have to move the kiln from where the art rooms are currently upstairs to the other side of the school. And as you may know, the kiln is very, very heavy, and it would be very tedious to try to move the kiln.
Mr. Roberts?
Could they not just put the kiln in the elevator, or would they not be able to support its weight?
They might be able to put the kiln in the elevator, but they also have to move the drama room. And the drama room has lots of props, and it can, it can be done, but it's just a lot more harder than to move the Spanish rooms.
You keep mentioning the flex classrooms in the old LMC, but wasn't that where the Spanish classrooms were supposed to go?
Well, for the Spanish, the Spanish classrooms will take up part of that space, but there will also be space left over in the LC, because as you may know, the LC currently, albeit small for an LC, can be split into multiple, into three classroom spaces, all which will be, the Spanish classrooms will still be bigger than before. And also, there'll be a new flex classroom where teachers will be able to teach.
Ms. Sergeus Getter?
Are there any differences in the entrance? Because I know that was kind of a priority to make it more secure and safe. So are there any differences in the entrances between Plan A and Plan B?
No, the entrances are the same.
Mr. Roberts?
Will they be more secure, or are they just going to leave it, as it is now?
The entrances between the two plans are the same. To make them more secure, there's like not a difference between those two plans.
So they're making them more secure?
Yeah, they're making them more secure in both plans.
Ms. Intaro?
I know that, so the cafeteria, shouldn't it be a higher priority? Because I think on the architectural plans, it's in phase four. Shouldn't it be a higher priority since there's so many kids going to the cafeteria every day? And I know that it's kind of unsafe, the exit, when entering, entering and exiting.
Both plans have renovation for, Plans A and Plans B both have the same renovation for the cafeteria.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the next presenter. Since the Wilmatt Junior High School Assistant Principal already presented, will the Administrator for Curriculum and Instruction please step forward and address the board?
I'm Jordan. I'm the Administrator for Curriculum and Instruction. Okay, so the pros and cons of option A. The pros are that it's seven thousand square feet, so it has a greater area than option B. And these aren't all the pros and cons. These are just some that are, I feel are more important. Some of the cons are that it costs three point five million, two thousand dollars more than option B. There's, there won't be as many flex classrooms. The art and drama rooms might cause issues for kids trying to get to class because they all remain in the spot where the lunch line is, and that's a very crowded area. And the LC will be put in one of the most crowded hallways in Highcrest. So the pros and cons of option B. Pros, it costs almost two hundred thousand dollars less than option A. There will be many flex classrooms. The art and drama classrooms will be out of the way and easier to access, and there will be more rooms for special ed classrooms. The cons will be that there is less area than option A. There's only five thousand seven hundred and forty square feet. And there's currently not an exact plan for the Spanish classrooms, but that can be fixed. So in my opinion, I think option B is the best option because it seems the best for classroom space and room for extra classrooms. Its pros include greater classroom space, less crowded hallways, and more space for special ed classrooms. Its cons include a temporary issue, which is the Spanish classroom doesn't have an exact place yet, and less square feet than option A, which is a difference of only about a thousand square feet. So overall, option B is the best option for classrooms and curriculum.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Lampy?
Why do you feel the expansion isn't as necessary?
The expansion for what? Sorry?
You said in option A, there would be a seven thousand square foot expand, like...
Well, yeah, the LC would expand seven thousand feet, and in option B, it would only expand five thousand seven hundred and forty feet. And I think that difference, it doesn't matter as much if the placement is better.
Mr. DiCamillo?
What would you lose in giving up those thousand square feet from option A to option B?
Do you mean like the LC space or space from other classrooms?
Like, what would, what does option A have that option B doesn't have with that one thousand square feet?
Well, because the LC is so small right now, we don't really know what would be in the LC if there was an extra thousand square feet. So it depends on the plans once it's built.
How would it be better for curriculum? Because on your last slide, it said it would be better for curriculum, but doesn't option A, wouldn't that be better for curriculum because it's more space in the LC?
Well, I think it would be better for curriculum for option B because there will be more space for the special ed classrooms, and the art and drama rooms will be out of the way, and it's kind of hard to access them where they are right now. But if they're upstairs and in the LC area, that's easier to access.
Mr. Harris?
What makes this better for teachers, option B?
I'm going to have to look at my resources and get back to you on that. I'm not really sure.
Mr. Petito?
How will the extra two hundred thousand dollars to the school in Plan B affect the taxpayers?
Well, the taxpayers will have to pay less money because there will be two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars that they can, they won't have to pay for.
Ms. Sergeus Getter?
Based on tax dollars, how long do you think it will be for the entire thing to get paid off?
I'm not really sure about that.
Are there any further questions from the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the next presenter. Is the Administrator for Student and Special Services in the, in the building? Seeing that they are not, will the Administrator for Human Resources please step up to the podium and address the board? Seeing that they are also absent, we will move on to the Administrator for Technology. Can they please step forward and address the board?
Good afternoon, and I'm Asher. One second. So for tech and media in option A, you would need at least three smart boards, which would be five thousand ninety-nine dollars each, two forty-eight inch portable TVs, and four forty-eight inch TVs for the group rooms. In total, six hundred, six Apple TVs, two hundred dollars each. And you'll need three Cisco Airs, which would be two hundred and seventy-nine dollars each, at a total of seventeen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. And then for option B, you would need two smart boards, two forty-eight inch portable TVs, one forty-eight inch TV, which would be the same amount just for, just three Apple TVs and just two Cisco Airs, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is a total of eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-five. We believe that option A, although more expensive, grants students more freedom to learn and explore, and it offers more options for them to do. It also gives the teachers more ability to have like flexible learning areas so the teacher, so the students could go in like the flex rooms and like do it by themselves.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Roberts?
So earlier we saw the two total costs for each of the, the renovation plans. For cost A, it was about three point five million, and for cost B, it was about three point, three million. Would those amounts of money for the tech, would that be for the total cost, or would that be additional for that cost?
So that is just for renovations. This would be additional for the things inside of the LC.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lampy?
Why is the new technology necessary to put in the LC?
So in this like changing world, everything is going to eventually like surround electronics and media and stuff like that. And so kids need to learn how to use those things. And also, it's a lot easier for presentation, stuff like that, and group work, to be able to mirror your iPad on something and like work on it all together.
Mr. Petito?
During the renovation, will you be upgrading any old tech in the school?
So right now, we're not quite sure, but this would all be new in the new LC.
Ms. Lampy?
These, this technology is very expensive, as you can see. Are there alternatives to these items that may be cheaper?
Well, I personally feel that students should have the top-of-the-notch technology to get a heads-up on the world and stuff like that, but as of right now, I do not know.
Mr. Harris?
Would all this technology be new? Or, because like the TVs in the classroom are a little bit old.
Yeah, in the LC, they would all be new.
Why then does option A, the tech, like renovations, why does that cost almost six thousand dollars more than option B?
Because it's a bigger area. We would be able to put more technology in for more group spaces and more people to go work in groups.
Ms. Sergeus Getter?
Shouldn't the money being used on new technology in Plan A be used on other, maybe more useful things? Because I know not a lot of teachers actually go into the LC to teach classes and such.
Well, I personally disagree with that in my experience. I at least have one class every there month, if not multiple times a week. So with all that new technology, even more teachers will want to come in. And with the larger area in option A, there will be more, more area for more teachers to come in and use the technology.
Ms. Lampy?
I'm still not entirely seeing why such high-grade technology is exactly necessary. Like, if you have an Apple computer and then you have something like a Dell, you can still type on it. Like, why is such expensive technology necessary? You can still do many of the same things, and there are, there are alternatives and counterparts to each program you can get on different types of computers.
Well, for like these technologies and stuff like that, we're not getting computers, stuff like that. We're getting like that smart board or like that TV to be able to work together. And like I said before, I feel that students should be able to, especially around here, be able to have the top-of-the-notch stuff.
Are there any further questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any other staff members that have not presented yet? All right, we will move on to discussion about the reports. I'll recognize each board member to speak if they would like. What good things do you guys see about option A? Mr. Harris?
I think one good thing would be the larger LC because more classrooms can go in there then and teach. I know we're saying that teachers might not be able to... I know we're saying that teachers might not be able to, might lose their classroom if we do option A. But if we get the LC done quickly, then they can also go there.
Uh, Ms. Serge Skater?
Another thing about option A is that it provides students with more technology in the LC, which I think, uh, as the presenter just indicated, would provide students with more of a creative and uh, well, obviously, technology-based learning experience. So I think that's kind of important, too.
Ms. Lampy?
I agree with Ms. Serge Skater. I think it is extremely necessary to get more and more schools on the digital path since it's becoming a very thing that's prevalent in jobs. Though I'm not super happy about the extra money it would cost, obviously.
Mr. DiCamillo?
Um, I personally think that having the additional flex classrooms in option B might be a more beneficial choice because you'll have less teachers on carts and more teachers in actual classrooms where they can teach better.
Um, at the same time, I'm gonna go back to what I said previously. Where, if we use those flex crap, classrooms in the old LMC, where would the Spanish classrooms go? Is there any comment on any other topic regarding option A? Mr. Petito?
Um, also, the fact that it is farther from the gym will result in less of a, of an annoyance to the classes.
Seeing no more comments on option A, we will move on to discussing option B. Mr. Harris?
Um, this was mentioned in one of the presentations is that the LC would be pretty close to the gym, uh, which I think wouldn't be good because it would be much more crowded in that hallway, and it would be louder, so it wouldn't be as quiet as maybe the LC in uh, WJS.
Ms. Serge Skater?
Um, I think option B is the better option because we would have less classrooms uh, be moved around and therefore maybe less teachers misplaced and without uh, you know, home-based classrooms that they can actually teach in.
Uh, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, just to contradict what Mr. Harris said, I think that, especially since I was in those long, that long row of classrooms next to the uh, the playground when I was in fifth grade, I think it would be a lot more helpful to have the classrooms, even though they're, I mean, the LC, even though it's next to the gym in that long hallway, because when I was in, back in fifth grade, it was very tedious to have to walk from one end of school all the way to the other. And that's where a lot of the classrooms are for fifth grade. So I feel like if the relocation, the LC was next to the gym, even though it would be slightly noisy, I think would be more beneficial.
Um, also, I think we should talk about accessibility of the LC because I know at least at Woma Junior High School, sometimes teachers might be less willing to go to the LC because it's so far away from all the other classrooms. And so which do you, which do all the board members think is more accessible to the students? Mr. DiCamillo?
I think option B is better because it's in that, the large blue hallway. And looking at the plans right here, it looks a lot bigger than the um, hallway the other LC would go in. And that would be beneficial because it allows more flow of students trying to get to their classes and the hallway wouldn't be cluttered by people like trying to get to the LC.
Um, how could we mitigate the uh, possible crowded hallway between the cafeteria and the LC in option uh, A? Because as we know, the LC would be right across from the cafeteria. So that could be easier for the students because they could be right next to the cafeteria. But it could also cause a really crowded hallway there, so how do you think we could mitigate that? Mr. Harris?
Well, for option A, since we're already gonna be doing work right by those offices, we could maybe push it a tiny bit back so you can widen the hallway. And it won't do as much, I mean, it will take some square feet away from the LC, but I don't think it'll be as much of a problem.
Are there any other comments making an argument for option A or for option B? Mr. DiCamillo?
Um, in option A, the um, some, I forgot who, but one of the board members has stated that there would be noise from the gym coming into the um, LC in option B. But in option A, there would also be noise coming from the cafeteria, which might be louder depending on the activities or like what, like unit they're in, so that might be a factor to consider.
Mrs. Zentara?
Um, in option B, even though it does cost less, um, and it might be a better choice, there is less space in the library and the LC. And that means that less technology and there, it'll be more crowded and it'll be less space for teachers to do more things with their classes.
Mr. Harris?
I'm gonna disagree with Mr. DiCamillo because um, during recess or at least lunch, people might be in the LC for recess or lunch, and I don't think the noise will probably affect them as much. But, because it's two periods out a day that I have lunch. Uh, no, there are seven periods, there will be no lunch, and I don't think it'll affect it.
Mr. Petito?
I would suggest option B. Um, for the Spanish classrooms getting more room, it is the most popular uh, languages among the language program and would allow more students to be in each period.
So by saying that they would get more room, are you suggesting that they go in the potential flex classrooms in the old LMC?
Uh, yes, I am.
Is there any further comment on either option? Seeing none, we will move on to a vote. Can I get a motion to approve one of the options?
Motion to approve option B.
Can you state fully what option B is?
Um, motion to, emotion to, uh, motion to improve option, option B of renovation for Highcrest.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
We will now do a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. All, if you are opposed, say nay. Ms. Serge Skater?
Aye.
Ms. Zentara?
Aye.
Ms. Lampy?
Aye.
Mr. DiCamillo?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Petito?
Aye.
Not that this would change the vote, but I vote nay. Seeing that a majority has voted in favor of option B, we will now move forward with that option. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. All against, say nay. Aye. All right, the meeting is adjourned.